Call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order for Tuesday, July 26 at 7:00 p.m. Please all rise for the pledge allegiance in the invocation led by Rodney Walls.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and indivisible, for the great good of us all.
Heavenly Father, please stand and help us with the decisions that we need to make tonight and that everything goes in a real safe and happy way. Amen.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bear.
Present.
Commissioner Walls.
Present.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Duckham.
Here.
Commissioner Polesky.
Here.
Commissioner Alexander.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Commissioner Snell.
Here.
Chairman Chatwell.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move.
We have a motion in support. Vice Chairman Kennedy, you have an item to add?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would request adding the bridge funding grant.
This will appear under Standing Committing Public Safety Transportation 13(c).
No, sir.
Any other items for consideration to the full board? Okay, well, when we get to consent, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Awards and recognition, we have none. Communications and petitions, please present them to the clerk. Seeing none, we have no special orders nor public hearings, we've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Public comment, each individual will state their name and have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity, and you may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate and will not answer questions at this time. This is your first opportunity for public comment, and it will be three minutes.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Daniel Graves. I don't know if this commission has anything to say about the vax mandates, especially if any would be imposed on Jackson County workers, but I'm asking that you strongly oppose such a thing. The vaccines don't work very well, if at all. I looked around at my acquaintances, and I know this will seem like anecdotal evidence, and yet many others are reporting similar anecdotal evidence, and actual science reports are now coming out and being printed in fairly prestigious journals showing that the vaccines are not terribly effective. I looked at my friends who were vaxxed and those who were unvaxxed. I've lost one to death in either, in both groups, and I've had several that were seriously, seriously ill and had to be hospitalized who had, who were fully vaxxed and boosted, and I've had others who were seriously ill who were unvaxxed. However, in those cases, it turned out that it was other health issues that could be dealt with that was causing the real problem, not the COVID. One had low potassium, for instance. But also, I've known many people who got the vax who had serious side effects. I had a niece who lost her baby after the shots. This is a very commonly reported thing. I'm not a doctor, I can't prove that that's why she lost her baby, but I do know that many, many women are reporting that they lost their babies after getting the shots. I had a close relative who developed blood clots after his first shot, never had had any in his life before, and then after the second shot, went into metastasizing cancer, which again is something that the scientific literature is showing is very common after the shots. Others have reported persistent headache since getting the shots. That's a very common side effect that's been reported. Others went into...
Thirty seconds, Mr. Graves.
Beg your pardon?
Thirty seconds, sir.
Okay. Well, I'm almost done, and I just say, you know, we're hearing so much about sudden adult death syndrome. It seems very likely to me that that's vaccine-related, but we'll know more as the data comes out. Thank you.
My name is Fred Trexler, retired professor of physics, living in Summit Township. Tonight, I am speaking in favor of Sheriff Gary Shutey's request for a one-mill tax to fund the construction of a new jail to replace the Wesley Street Jail. I have toured the Wesley Street Jail. Before my wife and I took the tour, I had thought that working at the jail would be a good first job for our granddaughter Rose, who has a bachelor's degree with highest honors in criminal justice. Now that I have seen the deplorable and dangerous conditions at this 70-year-old jail, I definitely do not want Rose to apply. The building is literally falling apart with the west addition separating from the original building. The sewer pipes are rusting out from the inside, so they break and leak sewage into catch pans and sometimes onto people. The heating and air conditioning systems have to be controlled manually by vice grips clamped onto a valve with no handle anymore. Cells are arranged in a linear array so that inmates cannot always be seen. This is dangerous. The older parts of the closed-circuit surveillance system give poor-quality images. The two-foot-thick walls prevent radio communications within the building. These are just some of the problems that I learned about on our tour of the old jail. Since then, I have read the architects' reports with the finding that it is not cost-effective to renovate the Wesley Street Jail. As a Christian, I want to see prisoners set free from their sinful behavior by faith in Jesus Christ and then rehabilitated to society. The proposed new jail is designed to be energy-efficient, improve the safety of the staff and the inmates, and increase the opportunity for rehabilitation. I'm asking the commissioners to support a one-mill tax for the jail for the proposal for the November ballot. To put this in perspective, the amount of property tax I would pay is less than the cost of one tank of gasoline. Thank you.
Craig Hatch with the Jackson County Chamber of Commerce. I just want to echo those thoughts. I'll be brief, but I have toured the jail. It's run its course. You all have tough jobs to do, and we don't always want to spend money on these things, but we're obviously at that point where we need it, so we certainly support that for our community and for our officers. Thank you.
Peter Bormuth, 142 West Pearl Street. I don't think anybody in this room can deny that we need a new jail, and I totally support the plan as far as the structure, an additional 250 beds out at Chanta Road. My question is about the construction after the Wesley Street Jail has been torn down. There's $10 million worth of fat in this proposal that's being pushed before the people, and I want to point out that when the sheriff originally came to us, he suggested that $40 million was probably the figure that it would take to do that. And that's actually could accomplish tearing down Wesley Street and building the new addition at Chanta Road, but there's an additional $10 million structure for new offices for the sheriff, complete with an elevator, allows to transport prisoners up to the third floor. Now, I want to point out that when Rick Sheary comes here and asks for money to rehab our elevators, you don't have it for him, or he has to twist it. And yet, we're going to go ahead and build a new elevator shaft that's going to have to be replaced in the future? I mean, please think about the taxpayers here as well. I've heard that it's necessary because we need to have security at the courthouse for the sheriff to be directly next door. I point out that there are two sheriff deputies working the entrance, the only entrance for the public to the courthouse. There are eight armed bailiffs. There are other law enforcement officials, state police, township police, city police, who are there to testify in cases. There's plenty of firepower at the courthouse. I'm also told that it's necessary so we keep contraband out of the jail. I point out that when the prisoners are brought in, they go up the elevators alone with their guards, you know? Ninety percent of all contraband actually does not get snuck into the jail. It's brought in by employees, food service, other employees. So, I don't think either one of those reasons are sufficient for a $10 million building, and I think it's a difficult choice to put this before the taxpayers the way it's currently set. And once again, I totally acknowledge that we need a new jail, and I 100% support the addition out of Chanta Road. Thank you.
I'm Marcy Jankovic from Summit Township, and I have attended almost every county commission meeting since last August, and I'm very pleased to endorse the reelection of Tony Bear, especially in light of the need for a new jail, because he is an architect and has a project manager experience, and his experience in education and talents and abilities would greatly benefit the board as they embark upon this significant project. It is evident at every meeting that Tony has his ducks in a row. He's done his research. He asks very pointed and sometimes uncomfortable questions. Sometimes we need to hear uncomfortable questions, and I appreciate that he offers that to us. And for that reason, and because my grandson lives in Parma Township, I think he would be heartily represented by the reelection of Tony Bear. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Shelley Wilber, and I live in Columbia Township. I wanted to talk about COVID to those of you that may be interested. First of all, you know, the government started out offering bribes, basically, free this, free that, for people to get the COVID vaccine. To me, that is suspect, anytime anything is free. I also have three friends who were coerced into getting the vaccine and had blood clots. There was no other determining cause of why they had blood clots. My doctor's office treated COVID patients, and they had to have two consecutive negative test results before they could go back into public life. Those PCR tests were not made to be used in this way. That's the first thing that the creator, the doctor that created it said. But also, they set the parameters so high that if you had any coronavirus, of which there are many, including the common cold, even a couple of months ago, it would test positive. And yet, people had to have two consecutive negative tests before they could return to public life. There's also a local doctor who was asked to go to New York City to treat COVID patients early in the situation, and she was in the thick of it. She was asked to sign death certificates that said the patient died with COVID when that patient she had been treating and knew that they did not have COVID, and that's not what they died for. When she refused to sign the death certificate, they said, never mind, we'll send it to someone Also, the hospitals were paid a monetary fee with every COVID diagnosis upon admission. They were also paid a higher fee for a COVID death on the death certificate. There was also a congressional hearing earlier this year. Senator Johnson hosted it. They had several doctors talk about COVID, about the potential side effects and some of the more serious side effects, and also patients who stepped up to talk about their personal experiences and what they are suffering lifelong in some cases with COVID. The last thing I want to say is that now they're suggesting that we give this vaccine to children. Why would we even consider that? Children have virtually no, no death. It's just virtually none unless they have some autoimmune disease and are ill to begin with. Thank you for your time.
Sue McCollough, Summit Township. I'm just here to thank Sheriff Shutey and his team for all the effort that has gone into the information that they've gathered and brought to us concerning the need for a new jail, and I would just encourage an affirmative vote for putting the proposal on the ballot so that the citizens have a chance to voice their opinion. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jeannie Brown. I'm from Summit Township. I worked for Henry Ford for 25 years and was let go because I didn't take that vaccine that was emergency use only, not FDA-approved, for a virus that is 98% recoverable. We had many patients in the hospital diagnosed with COVID but had no symptoms because the PCS, PCR tests were never meant to be used in detecting viruses. If you read the box, the masks come in, it states that it does not stop viruses, and the mask should be changed every two hours. It is a fact that the hospitals got more money if they had patients who tested positive for COVID, and each stopped, diagnosed, admitted, ventilated, gave them more money, and if they were, if they harvested their organs, just one person was worth well over $100,000. Then the coroner made money too, if they were COVID-positive. They killed thousands by putting people on vents and giving them Rendezivir, shutting down their kidneys and making them fill up with fluid and keeping their family separated from them early on. At the beginning of the year, Henry Ford started posting, at the beginning of the year of 2021, Henry Ford started posting how many people with COVID were in the hospital, how many were vaccinated, more than two weeks before, and how many were unvaccinated. I look back at the post, January 3, 2021, there was 36% were vaccinated, 65 were unvaccinated that were in the hospital. I looked at the comments, there was 31 comments, and now there's only 18. February 1, 47% vaccinated or boosted, 55 unvaxxed. There was 43 comments, now there's only 15. February 7, 48% vaccinated and/or boosted, 53 unvaccinated. 20 comments were under there. Now there's only 13 comments. February 21, 48 vaccinated and/or boosted...
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
48 unvaccinated. There was 13 comments, and now there's five. May 1, March 1 was the last day they posted on their Facebook. 66% vaccinated or boosted, 43 unvaccinated, 19 comments, and now there's only 10. Do you see the numbers of vaccinated go up each post? What are they trying to hide by deleting comments?
Ma'am, you're out of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Juster. I'm the Director of Public Safety for Blackman and Leoni Township. I'm here to speak briefly on the, both the jail millage and the 911 surcharge. I respectfully request that you put both those on the ballot. I've been in law enforcement for 29 years here in Jackson. I think both issues, both the jail and the 911 surcharge being raised so that we can boost the capabilities of the 911 dispatch center is important to the safety of the public, not just in Blackman Township and Leoni Township, which make up approximately one out of every four people that live in this county. But I think it's important enough to put on the ballot. I won't sit here and tell people, and I never have, in millage issues and so forth, to vote yes, but I do have confidence in the people of Blackman Township, Leoni Township, and Jackson County to make an informed decision on both those issues, and I think it's imperative that we give them the right to vote on, do they want to have a new jail? Do they want to increase the capabilities of the 911 dispatch center? And I think to, to not allow them is doing a disservice. So, I would just ask that you put both issues to the people of Jackson County, and they make an informed decision, they vote, and afterwards, the people have spoken. If they pass, they pass; if they don't pass, they don't pass. But I think both of these issues are important to the safety of the residents of the communities that I represent and the county as a whole. Thank you for your time.
My name's David Wooden. I'm the Deputy Fire Chief of the City of Jackson. I'm the Vice Chair of your 911 Advisory Board. I want to speak to the 911 surcharge. We have met with several of you this week, and we appreciate your time and your questions and desires to know the truth about all the factors involved. We, the Board, have sent this to you with a unanimous vote of the 911 Advisory Board. We would ask that you would submit this to the ballot proposal, to a ballot vote, so that the citizens can make the decisions about what our needs are and let us sell that to them and teach them what our needs are. Again, as I spoke last week, this makes significant time reductions in response for medical care to the citizens of our community. Thank you for your time.
I'm going to speak real fast because I have to get through this. Ready? Jennifer Biddinger, asking our health department provide truth to the people of our county. Before COVID, it was known to discontinue a vaccine if there were more than 50 deaths following inoculation. Now, along with no retribution for its victims, the big business pharmaceutical companies continue to instill fear and pressure through the media to force this experimental, dangerous shot on the world for financial gain and other nefarious reasons. I pulled up, not from your site because that was too difficult, but I pulled up this from VAERS, a report from 3/18/22, which compares 15 months of vaccine deaths and injuries from COVID vaccine to 30 years of non-COVID vaccines. And this is only what is reported. Many doctors don't report everything for various reasons. So here, we have from the 15 months of COVID vaccine, over 26,000 deaths, and on 30 years of non-COVID vaccines, over, a little bit over 9,000 deaths. And then it goes on to permanent disabilities, hospitalizations, life-threatening injuries, strokes. 2,992 strokes from 15 months of COVID vaccines compared to 104 strokes over 30 years of other vaccines. Currently, that death rate has gone up to 29,635 deaths, and also recorded 4,358 in the United States of fetal deaths following the vaccine, and then just last week, an additional 103 records of COVID-19 injuries added from the six-month-to-four-year age group. These are just allergic reactions. These are brain injuries and permanent medical conditions. This is what should be on the front page of your health department's website, and facts that medical doctors and science provide, saying that it is way better for children's health to be exposed to the virus than to take the vaccine, and that the shot has not been proven to be ineffective. It only causes weakened immune systems and damage to our bodies. We ask that you have the courage to stand up against the governmental cover-ups and properly inform the public of truth. Why is life valued less than ARPA funds or the fear of being wrong? The people are not being informed of the truth. Doctors are threatened to go along. The media continues to go along, but they can't cover up the celebrity deaths and sports figures that drop dead on the field for all to see. It's much easier to label it sudden death syndrome than genocide.
Twenty-five seconds.
Do you think that the families of the three young doctors on staff at a Toronto hospital that recently died within four days of each other after the mandated fourth dose of the shot were comforted by the condolences of the hospital? Do you think the parents of the two-month-old that died of a heart attack within an hour of the shot aren't grieving over their uninformed decision? People will still make bad decisions, but providing them with truth first is the right thing to do. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Jim Dutton. First time I've been to a meeting here, and I decided to get up because I say hallelujah to everybody that just spoke on the vaccines. We have a family member that's a doctor down in Alabama, and when we visited down there in the winter, wanted to get some hydrochloroquine just to have, and he looked into getting it for us just to have as a fighter in case we got COVID, and couldn't get it, because if he got it, he was going to lose his license. So, these doctors are in control. What we're hearing here is the truth, and people that are pro-America, they are not racist, they are not against America, they are not this, they are not that. All this propaganda that's out there really does a division-type thing, so I'm trying to speak for all people. Mainly, I want to be here to represent my grandkids, because I have six of them. I was an educator for 33 years in this county, and I dealt with a lot of athletes, and I was a coach for many, many years. And first of all, I thank God that my grandsons did not have to wear a mask in the schools that they were at. I thank God that they didn't have to go to, on a computer learning, because as an educator, I know it's the worst thing you can do. All the mental health issues and insensitivities that these kids have these days now from the last couple of years of torture and so forth, basically, that they were forced to have through the administration. I worry about the state of Michigan. I worry about the state of Michigan because of our leadership up top. Kalamazoo on the big news last night, and through a committee like this, feces, human feces is being put into businesses, front of businesses, putting on people's yards. The community's all upset. They're in there in front of a group, just as you were. This was on the news, and the gentleman in charge, I don't know who's the guy in charge here, but whoever was in charge says, well, we can't do anything. We won't want the police going after these people. We don't want to pick them up, put them in jail. I hear a lot about our jails here tonight, but they don't want to put them in there because it's going to hurt them possibly for the rest of life and give them a record. Well, I'm sorry, if they commit something, they need to be where the punishment is deserved to be, and they should go to jail, and they should have that on their record. I hope that Jackson never gets to that type of situation where that type of stuff with our businesses, with our community, is going to be that embarrassment that was on the major news last night. I was, and I worry about it because my boy is an insurance agent in Kalamazoo. So, it comes to a time when, you know, you have to step up, and America needs to step up, and I always say, wake up, America. Look at what's done. There's been a huge money grab. It's been a crazy two years, and it's been, been totally a propaganda show. Now, we are the birth of the Republican Party in Jackson, as I understand it, and I've talked to Mr. Wahlberg a couple of times about it, and I believe you, as all the commissioners in this county, should think of ways to protect our elections, because they aren't just sitting back. I hear on the news all the time, wait till November, it's going to change. Everybody's ticked off, this and that and the other thing. Well, you know what? They're sitting back, and they're going to have their plans, just like I read in the Free Press and in the media about Michigan starting with all this COVID junk that's going on, get the shots, get monkeypox, on and on and on.
Your time's up, sir.
And for the people, we the people, we need to stand up, all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton.
I'm Sharon Haupt from Waterloo Township. Thank you, commissioners, for your public service to Jackson County. I want to begin with a quote from a Frenchman from the late 1700s, Maximilien. He said, "The secret of liberty lies in educating people, whereas the secret of tyranny is in keeping them ignorant and in fear." Just last week, on July 13, the White House COVID advisor, Anthony Fauci, told Fox News host Neil Cavuto, one of the things that's clear... host Neil Cavuto, "One of the things that's clear from the data is that vaccines, because of the high degree of transmissibility of this virus, didn't protect overly well, as it were, against infections." On the Jackson County Health Department's website, under COVID vaccines for children, I'm perplexed by the statement titled, "Is it effective?" The answer states, "Clinical trials showed 90% to 100% efficacy," and that there were no severe cases of COVID during clinical trials. Yet while the Health Department, the FDA, and the CDC state this, they will never concede to the truth about these emergency-use authorized injections and their harms to pregnant women, babies, as well as our youth and thousands of adults. Even their own VAERS database states, "Since July 2022, 126 minors have died and 55 had died within seven days of receiving the injection." When will the Jackson County Health Department report the truth? I work in a doctor's office in Chelsea, where the majority of our patients are over 50 years of age. I've seen a lot of adverse reactions from the vaccine. They've reported neuropathy, heart issues that they've never had before to having to see a cardiologist, fatigue, COVID symptoms, a lingering cough, and blood clots. And the majority of our patients will call in and say that they're ill, and it can't be COVID, because they've had two vaccines and two boosters, and they end up testing and having COVID. There is such a phenomenon as natural immunity. Give us the truth and transparency, and we will figure this out. Thank you.
My name is Jackie Leslie, and I'm from Blackman Township. The Jackson County Health Department needs to update their information on COVID shots. Just today, under Facts vs. Myth, it says, "Per the CDC, there is currently no evidence that vaccines cause problems with getting pregnant or infertility in males." However, in a report on July 25th, Epoch Times reports, "Experts warn that there is credible evidence that the COVID shots may cross-react with censin and reproductive genes in sperm, ova, and placenta in ways that might impair reproductive outcomes." They say, "We could potentially be sterilizing an entire generation." In one recent investigation, 42% of women with regular menstrual cycles said they had bled more heavily after vaccination. Another research has found the Pfizer COVID jab impaired semen concentration and motile count in men for about three months. Four in 10 COVID jabs, women report menstrual irregularities. Miscarriages, fetal deaths, and stillbirths have also risen. Our local health department needs to be on top of the latest reports. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Commissioner.
No, you go ahead. You start first.
Good evening. My name is Amadory Barra. I'm here to address agenda number item 9C, the jail millage. I fully support the need, can you hear me okay? I fully support the need for the additions to the jail and the need for the millage to fund the additions and the new sheriff's office. However, I'm asking this commission not to approve the millage ballot language as proposed here. The ballot language of the second paragraph includes language authorizing distributions, which do not coincide with the cost of building or running a jail. They merely mention, if the ballot initiative is approved, a portion of the millage may be distributed to the downtown development authorities of the city of Jackson, the villages of Grass Lake and Springport, the townships of Blackman and Leonie, the local development finance authorities of the village of Parma and the township of Blackman, and the Brownfield redevelopment authority of the city of Jackson. While I'm sure all those entities can benefit from the proposed distributions, they appear to have no connection with a jail millage. The ballot language, as well as the resolution itself, do not address what portion of the funds may be distributed, how they will be used, or what they will be used for. I'm asking this commission to provide citizens with the state law referenced in the ballot language pertaining to the entities which may receive distributions. There's no citation in the ballot language of that law. I'm asking this commission to provide the citizens with the specific uses of those distributions by the various entities. I'm asking this commission to not approve this ballot language as it's written without the requested revisions. Thank you for your time.
Rosemary Tanner, City of Jackson. I'd be remiss in this, and I know you folks have a tough decision, and you've heard all about the millage. So all I have to say is, I guess you don't have much choice. I support it, although nobody wants to get increase in their millage and in their taxes. But we don't really have much choice, as I see it right now. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
John Wilson, City of Jackson. Tonight, each of you will vote to place a large residential property tax increase to build a new $52 million county jail. As WKHM's Greg O'Connor said to Chairman Schott yesterday, quote, "It wouldn't be on the agenda if it wasn't moving forward," end quote. So it's a done deal. Now, all each of you have to do is talk to your homeowning constituents into voting themselves a large tax increase to build this new jail, because as Chairman Schott will put it, quote, "It will benefit all the homeowners of Jackson," end quote. While all this know a new jail is needed, just how will this jail benefit all of Jackson? How does a large tax increase benefit Jackson homeowners when they are paying so much more for food and for these homeowners who will be paying double to heat their homes this winter? It passed. This 20-year millage will bring in $5.3 million the first year, according to Mr. Overton, and more each year thereafter, throughout those 20 years. After 20 years, this one mill will collect approximately $106 million from the homeowners to construct and operate this new jail, and new administrative offices that are included with it as of tonight. Jackson Patriot Media and political consultant Amy Hawkins said at the Wesley Street Jail Tour, which I attended, that a political action committee, also known as A-PAC, will be formed to advocate for the passage of this jail. Whose panel she will be on, I'm not sure. But that doesn't seem too patriotic to me. We will agree a new jail is needed, a new jail that can be constructed for much less with operational costs allocated from the county's general fund budget and the county's multimillion-dollar reserve fund balance. And of course, there's still $2 billion sitting and lancing from the CARES Act that can be distributed to help build this new jail. And also, not to mention, the $32 million that the county received
Thirty seconds, John.
from the federal government just last year. And all the while, each of you knew that a new jail was needed. But is there any of that $32 million going towards this new jail to help offset the costs to the homeowners? I hope you consider your vote tonight in voting no, and bring back a smaller amount for a millage, and I would be all for it. Let's go with that point five. We can do it. Thank you. Public comment is now closed. There's no special meetings of standing committees. Item 8A, approval of the minutes of the June 21st Board of Commissioners meeting. Support. Have a motion in support. Any items for correction? Additions or deletions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Yes, sir? Would you mind? Thank you. We've arrived at the consent agenda. Entertain a motion for the consent agenda. We have a motion in support. Items for removal for discussion later. Commissioner Baer.
Yes, I would like to request that item 9C, Sheriff's Jail Millage, and 9E, Emergency Dispatch amended radio policy, be removed from consent.
Okay, we will move 9C to 13D. Then we will remove Emergency Dispatch amended impact radio policy. Correct, Commissioner Baer?
Yes, please.
Which is item 9E, and we will make it 13E. Vice Chairman Kennedy, are you all right with that?
Yes, I have them noted.
I'm moving that way. Vice Chairman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we get to those items, oh, we would need to vote on the consent agenda, correct, Mr. Chair?
We're getting ready, and then you will, then we'll be at Standing Committee Items, Public Safety and Transportation, sir.
Thank you.
Yep. Are there any other items for removal for discussion at later date? Seeing none, the consent agenda has amended with two items removed. All in, Madam Clerk, can you post it? The consent agenda has amended at past 8:0. We've now arrived at Standing Committee, Public Safety and Transportation, chaired by Vice Chairman Cory Kennedy. Cory, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item of business tonight would be appointments. We are currently looking for a public seat from the business community for the Community Corrections Advisory Board. The current member is Matt Dame, however, he has not reapplied, and there is no applicant. So if anyone in the audience would be interested in that, we'd be happy for you to apply, and we'll revisit this next month. Takes us to item B, the 911 dispatch surcharge fee. I guess I'll start by reading the ballot language.
Sure.
Okay. "The Jackson County Central Dispatch Proposition for 911 System Funding. Shall the county of Jackson, Michigan be authorized to assess a charge on all landline, wireless, and voice-over Internet Protocol services, service users located in Jackson County of up to $3 per month, to be used exclusively for the funding of 911 emergency telephone call answering and dispatch services within Jackson County, including facilities, equipment, and maintenance and operating costs?" Question mark.
I'll move to approve that. Support. We have a motion in support? Do we have discussion? Vice Chairman Kennedy.
Yeah, so I've thought long and hard about this. I've gone out to Huron Valley, also went out with a couple commissioners this week to meet with the local fire chiefs. They put forth valid concerns of what's going on in Jackson, and I do believe there's a need to be addressed. However, my core belief has always been that growing government is something I'm against. And while the $3 per month, you're currently paying $1.50 on your lines, if you didn't know, and this is asking to increase it another $1.50. While that would take care of the cost for now, this department would be created perpetually, and eventually that cost will go up. And once you create an entity in government, it never goes away. It only grows. So that's my concern with it. I do feel there's a valid need. There's some technology that could definitely help our firefighters, as well as ambulance individuals. Those would be my comments.
Any other commissioner comments? Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Kennedy, for your commentary as well. I also had the opportunity to discuss this with Chief Wooden, and I really appreciated that time there, and had an opportunity to learn a little bit about how 911 works. I guess this is something that I'd really taken for granted myself, you know, just a lifeline, or a lifetime of living in Jackson County, you just pick up the phone and dial 911, and you expect to get help, whether that's police help, fire help, or medical help. They might be able to walk you through CPR, half a dozen other things. And sometimes I learned that help that a 911 operator can give you in those first five minutes on the phone might be the difference between life saved or not. And that information is really important. I'm also very much against the idea of government growth, but I think what we have seen here is government shrinkage, actually, over the last 20 years. As our 911 fund stated, $1.50, the additional things that 911 was doing, we ended up outsourcing. So a lot of the medical right now is outsourced through HVA, which is our ambulance service, which works, they provide that service for us. But in the meantime, every 911 call that comes in is now being bounced from our local dispatch, possibly over to HVA, which causes a lot of delays. And I think this does reduce the quality of service that everyone in Jackson County does receive. And it's that help that we only receive in our worst day, when we need it the most, that we realize there may or may not be these limitations. I think to properly fund this going forward is the right idea. I am concerned about the cost. However, we do have an option here. I believe I read in the language that we're approving up to a $1.50 increase. However, it'd be this board of commissioners that can reduce that. So that'd be an item on us to reduce this year by year as possible and as necessary. I do like the idea of moving this forward, simply because, as I learned, the way that I expected 911 to work is not the way it has been working in our county. We have been outsourcing a lot of these services, and I think we do deserve the best possible service that we can offer our residents here. A $1.50 increase per line, it's not the cheapest thing in the world, especially when we think about our businesses that can often have five business lines, 10, 15, 20, or 100. And also, that $1.50, again, sounds cheap, but that's also monthly. So when you do the math, it can be a sizable increase for some persons. However, I think for the value that we are receiving, I think it is definitely worth the investment at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Baer. Commissioner Bear.
If you could clarify for me this $1.50 increase. Still, after this millage... If this passes, they still have to come to the board of commissioners, state their case, and determine how much of that $1.50 they will receive.
Yes, sir.
So they'll be approved up to $1.50. But if they come here, this board could limit them to 25 cents.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pawelski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think to emphasize what Commissioner Bear has just noted, there's a lot of convincing that's going to have to go to me with respect to the budgeting for 911 before I'm prepared to vote for the entire amount of the surcharge to be assessed. So, much work has to be done, but I think in the interest of getting good Emergency Dispatch here in Jackson County and prepared to have the voters vote. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Snell.
Yeah, it should be noted, too, that even if this passes, it's going to take 12 to 18 months before our people are certified to do the EMS. And the longer we wait, the more possibility for issues to come up. One of the things that I want to see, too, is the interface between us and HVA to be fast-tracked as much as possible, because that's going to take a year to 18 months to get that done, too. And I'll be voting yes on this one.
Commissioner Duckham.
First, I'd like to thank the fire chiefs that met with four of us commissioners last week. Everybody has a way to tell where they're... Everybody has a way to tell why they think we need the 911 system. And we sat down at a roundtable session, and I learned a lot about what our fire chiefs need. Very beneficial meeting. I'll be supporting this. I think it's a needed needed addition to what we're doing. I hate growing government, so I hope we can get a number and not take the whole $3. Maybe we can get by with taking, too. Whatever it needs, we need the system. Just hate to raise what it costs to live in Jackson County. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Shall we go ahead and vote? Madam Clerk, could you post the vote, please?
I'm a yes.
The ballot language passes eight zero. Thank you, commissioners. Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That will now take us to the added item C, Bridge Funding Grant. And I believe Angela's here to give the commissioners further details. Each of you should have received an email from the administrator, also grieving you on it.
All right, good evening, commissioners. So the item before you is a bridge grant opportunity. It was brought to us yesterday afternoon by the County Road Association. It was very last minute, but it's an opportunity to do Bridge Bundling Number Three, essentially. So the Hanover Bridge that you guys just supported on the consent agenda. It's like that. So again, MDOT will... If we get the funding, we would turn our bridges over. They would pay for design, pay for everything to be constructed, except for, right now, a 20% match. So currently, that is estimated to be about $637,800 that JCDOT would pay if we received these grant funds. Now, talking with the County Road Association yesterday on the phone, that is the maximum amount. They're really trying to find additional funds to supplement that. One of the structures... So the two structures are Albion Road Bridge and then the Trist Road Bridge. Albion is an on-system bridge, meaning it's a busier structure, and MDOT considers it to be a primary structure. The Trist Road is an off-system, and currently, they're trying to get it so that the off-system would only be a 10% match. So this, again, is a maximum amount JCDOT would have to put in. It's $637,800. We do have... Every year, we put five bridges in for grant funding the local bridge program. And these two structures are on it. So back in the beginning of the year, you guys supported the resolutions to submit for those. And the estimate for those constructions where Albion Road was almost $2 million, and Trist Road was 1.2. So right now, we're asking for the board to support the chair signing a resolution to submit to the state by midnight, August 1st, so that they can submit a bridge bundling of about 88 structures statewide for this federal grant.
Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Bear.
Thanks, Angie, for your presentation. This grant system, our total cost is going to be $637,800.
Estimated for the two structures, yes.
There's a possibility of us going down to a 10% match?
So the possibility of it going down on the Trist Road, it's a good chance that'll just be a 10% match. So that would take about $122,200 off of that. But the state is looking to find additional funds so that it potentially could be funded 100%, like the Hanover Road structure. They just can't guarantee it at this time.
Okay. So if these two bridges were just done through the regular grant program instead of this special program, what would our total cost be?
So we estimate that currently at about $600,000. $600,550 between the two. So this program potentially could be about $30,000 more. But, again, they're both competitive programs. These two structures are on the list. If we get the statewide grant, they'll get funded. The five that we submit every year, we've been submitting these structures for a number of years, and they have not been submitted... Selected.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, are there any other questions? If not, I would be looking for a motion to authorize Chairman Shotwell to sign this application for the grant.
Make a motion to accept the grant. Have Chairman Shotwell sign it.
We have a motion. We have support from Commissioner Snell. Any further discussion? You can post the vote, Madam Clerk. Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Kennedy.
Thank you. It takes us to... Thank you, Angela. Takes us to item D, the sheriff's millage. I'll start out by reading the draft ballot language. Jail addition and sheriff's office millage question. For the purpose of constructing, equipping, and financing in addition to the county jail and a new sheriff's office to replace the existing building and for their ongoing operating expenses, shall the constitutional limitation upon the total amount of taxes, which may be assessed in one year upon all property within the county of Jackson, Michigan, be increased by up to $1 mil... $1 per $1,000 of state taxable valuation for a period of 20 years, 2022 to 2041 inclusive? If approved and levied in full, this millage will raise an estimated $5,275,280 in the first calendar year of the levy based on the tax... State tax valuation. If approved and levied in accordance with state law, a portion of the millage may be distributed to the downtown developmental authorities of the city of Jackson, the village of Grass Lake and Springport, and the townships of Blackman and Leoni, the local development finance authorities of the village of Parma and the township of Blackman, and the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority of the city of Jackson. Yes, no? Any questions from commissioners? I believe it was Commissioner Bear that asked to have it removed. So Commissioner Bear.
Yeah, I might have panicked a few people when I said I wanted this pulled. I am totally in favor of this millage, and because I do want it to pass, I am going to be making a motion to make two small changes. We all know what this millage is about, because we've been working on it for a year. Many of the citizens that will go into the voting booth and read this, they don't have that background. So I would like a couple word insertions in here that I think will help the other voters that haven't been privy to this year of conversations understand what this is. And my motive is to improve the odds of its passing. So what I'm proposing is that... It's a long motion, but I would like to move that first sentence. For the purpose of constructing, equipping, and financing in addition to the county jail. Since we have two county jails, I would like this to be specific. Where it says addition to the... I would add Chantor Road County Jail. To help people understand exactly where this is going. Chantor Road County Jail and a new sheriff's office to replace the existing Wesley Street building. So citizens know which building's being torn down.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
Support. Any discussion?
Can I ask who supported the motion? Mr. Kennedy supported the motion? Mr. Kennedy, if I may?
Yes, sir.
You're aware that this language is what's been approved by our legal counsel and been given to us to direct us in order to pass this millage correctly? And that while the additions, Commissioner Bear feels are worthy and responsible and unnecessary, for the term jail refers to all facilities whereupon the sheriff of the Jack City of... County of Jackson locks people up. He may use any facility that he deems appropriate to make it a provisional jail, if he so deemed. So we do not need to have the definition of Chantor Road. We do not have to have the definition of Wesley Street. The sheriff is the one who runs the jail. And it can be as many buildings as he deems appropriate, and this board of commissioners is willing to fund. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, commissioners? Commissioners, no.
Yeah, if we make changes to this, like that, that needs to go through legal. And I fear that we will miss our November target date. As I've stated before, I don't like to have any millages on the ballot outside of the November ballot. Because that's when the most people vote. And since we're talking about asking people to raise their own taxes, I think we should allow the most people the opportunity to vote.
Any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Alexander.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. I'm just wondering if we could perhaps ask the advice of perhaps our administration if this change in the ballot language would be likely to invalidate it? Or if this change would be as inconsequential as it might appear?
First, I would state that I am not an attorney. I've worked with a lot of them, though. While I don't believe that language is necessary, I don't necessarily believe that it would that it would create a consequence for the ballot other than to make the ballot question longer. We've all been in the voting booth, and suddenly, there's this very long ballot language in front of us. I prefer to keep those things short and concise, if possible. And frankly, again, I'm not an attorney. That's just my opinion.
Okay, if there are no other questions, we do have a motion on the floor for the amended language, I believe. So if I'm in order, Mr. Chair, I'd ask for a vote?
Yeah, go ahead and post it. Okay? That's fine.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to clarify. We're voting on the amended language?
Correct.
Voting on the amended language. Commissioner Bear.
Yes.
Commissioner Walz. Commissioner Kennedy.
No.
Commissioner Duckham.
No.
Commissioner Pawelski.
No.
Commissioner Alexander.
No.
Commissioner Snell.
No.
Chairman Shotwell.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay. With that being said, I'd be looking for a motion for the drafted ballot language.
Before we go forward, Commissioner Bear, you made the comment that you had two items. Does that cover both your items, sir? Thank you. Commissioner Kennedy?
So I'll move the ballot language, then.
It was never... Went that way. We began with discussion on the front end of it. So we have a motion in support at this time. Commissioner Duckham, would you like to speak?
Yes. I understand we need to keep this probably intact and move forward. However, we had a question tonight from a citizen about why we're giving money away. And it was going... It was giving money to the city and the village of Grass Lake, the city of Jackson, local businesses. I can see how that would be confusing to the voters. And I know it's got to be explained. I know what it is. But it does make it kind of confusing to people in the voting booth. Is there a better way to explain that? That's my question.
This is one of those discussions we've had time and again, every time we have a ballot measure, frankly. It is required for our attorneys by MCL in Michigan. And for the benefit of the audience, I would tell you that there's these tax capturing entities, DDAs, brownfields, you know, LDFAs, local development finance authorities, all these little entities. And they don't have a tax of their own. They capture the incremental value in a tax increase for the land that they... That is designated in their zone. So if you're a downtown development authority, a DDA, the value of that DDA, they capture any incremental increase in that value from a tax perspective. So legally, in the state of Michigan, it's the way the law works, and it works for everyone this way. Anytime there's an increase, they're going to capture a little piece of it. Now, we've gone back and forth with our attorneys multiple times on this, saying, "Well, you know what? We're... People don't understand." And our attorneys will tell you that, "Well, that's your responsibility to educate the public on the ballot measure so they understand and can make an informed, educated decision on the ballot." God knows that's difficult, but we try. At the same time, they're saying, "You can't not take it or not put it on. If you don't put it on, you're misleading the public." Because you're not telling them that part of the tax that they approved that they think is going for jail and jail operations isn't. isn't. It's going to the DDA. With that all said, we really don't have a whole lot of options. We have to put it on and then do our darndest, make sure everybody understands what it is and why it is. It's the law.
Mr. Kennedy?
And if I may, if I could further clarify, in other counties that have left this language off, the public's, these entities still captured that money, whether the language is on there or not. So this is being open and honest to the public. If you take issue with this, the issue is not with this ballot language, but rather with your state lawmakers in Michigan, who could change that law if, if you don't like these authorities.
Any, any further questions from commissioners? Motion passes eight, eight to nothing. Congratulations. Again, commissioners. Standing Committee, Public Safety, Transportation, Commissioner Kennedy?
Take us to our final item tonight for this committee, item E, Emergency Dispatch. And give me a second to pull that up, if you would, please. And I believe Commissioner Bear had that polled, and I would give him the floor if he's interested.
Okay. May it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Reading many times the specific wording in this proposed change, you'll see that under item three, cost, the two paragraphs that were in the previous policy are being totally deleted, they're struck through. So it means they're not gonna be in, those words are not gonna be in the final policy. So what you have for remaining then, for cost calculations, each non-county member is responsible for 3% of the original investment cost. That's the county's $7,500,000 original investment cost. So if, if an entity wants to come on to our system, this formula, you take 3% of 7.5 million, that comes to $225,000. So every, according to the proposed language, every entity coming on is gonna have to pay $225,000 in, in addition to their share of the operating expenses annually. I don't think that's what was intended, um, but that's the wording that is here. So if this is approved, this will be the policy, and we will be charging people $225,000 to get on our system. Um, that would be paragraph one under the new policy. Paragraph two under the new policy, uh, if a non-county member is adding infrastructure to the county's radio system, they will be, they will receive an annual 3% credit for their total investment. So if, example, consumers, they were predicting that their investment would be 500,000, so they would get 3% of that as a credit. The way I'm reading the words, and the words are plain, um, I don't think this is what was intended. So I think this should be, this needs to go through the county, uh, system for another round of reviews and update this. That's my opinion.
Any other commissioner comments? Chairman Shotwell?
Commissioner Bear, would you be interested in making the motion to administratively send this back to the Administrator Controller's Office and return it again through the committee cycle so it could be reviewed and your suggestions could be handled?
Be pleased to make that motion.
Do I? We have a motion and support to redirect this policy again to the Administrator Controller's Office for review and further clarification. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. It goes back on your desk.
Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes business for the Public Safety and Transportation Committee.
Standing Committee, General Government Chair by Commissioner Phil Duckham, Commissioner Duckham.
City of Jackson, the LFA, BRA?
Yes, it is.
Our current member is Ray Snell, Commissioner Ray Snell. Uh, the applicant is Commissioner Jeremy Alexander. The committee has recommended Commissioner Jeremy Alexander, and I would forward that to the board for a vote.
Any nominations from the floor? We have a motion and support from Commissioner Kennedy, correct?
Uh.
Was that your voice?
It was actually Chairman Duckham hearing Commissioner Bear.
Okay, Commissioner Bear, thank you. Any other commissioners like to be nominated? Speak now or forever hold your peace. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Dooley carried. Congratulations, Commissioner Alexander. Commissioner Duckham?
That's all the business the General Government Committee has to do tonight, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Standing Committee, Human Services. Commissioner Earl Polesky, Commissioner Polesky.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The only item we have on the agenda tonight is appointments, but the appointments docket is empty, and so I have nothing further to bring to you, sir.
Thank you very much. We've now arrived at unfinished business. Any unfinished business to come before the board? Hearing none? Any new business to come before the board?
Under new business, I would like to entertain a motion for a resolution for the Board of Commissioners rejecting private monies for funding of elections, and it go to the Administrator Controller's Office for a full review and be brought back at the next general meeting of the Board of Commissioners.
Is that a motion?
I'm asking for the motion because it's an, it's an item that appears has a new item.
So moved.
Support. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any other items for consideration by the Board of Commissioners? We've arrived at public comment. Each individual will state their name and have two minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. This is public comment, second round, two minutes.
Peter Bormuth, 142 West Pearl Street. I'd just like everyone in District Eight to notice on this night when the commissioners voted on some very significant items that are going in front of the taxpayers, that Commissioner Darius Williams is not here. Now, everyone knows that I'm also running for this spot. I would like everyone out there to vote for me so that you get representation here on this commission. Darius is a good man, but he doesn't do anything, and on an important like, night like this, he's not even here to represent the constituents of District Eight. Um, secondly, I wanna make a, um, endorsement of a political candidate who is running for State Senate, and this is an endorsement in the Democratic primary. I'd like to endorse Sue Sheen, and I hope that all the Democrats out there in District Eight will vote for her. Thank you.
Good evening. Amy Hawkins from, uh, 8251 Luntton Road, Plaski Township in Concord. First of all, um, I know as we're approaching Election Day on Tuesday, I just want to give, um, to those of you that are facing a primary, Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Bear, and Mr. Alexander, I just, I'm cheering for you, rooting for you. Uh, thank you so much for your leadership and the questions that you ask. Um, I do hope that you are victorious on Tuesday evening. Second of all, um, thank you very much on behalf of the community that cares deeply about our law enforcement, our inmates, and our community safety. Thank you for allowing this to go to the millage. Um, it is, for me as a consumer, it's a hard, it's a hard pill to swallow to recognize how is it that it has taken 70 years for us to get to this point when the commissioners are ready to move this forward? So I wanna thank you for that, but I also wanna extend an invite to you. This millage is not about the sheriff getting a new office or us getting a new jail. This is about security and, um, is for security and safety for our inmates, for our officers, and for our community. And so I want to invite you as commissioners to host your own town halls, to host your own, um, door-to-door efforts, phone call efforts, that your community needs to hear from you, that this is about the people, um, people within our jail system, but the people who are working so hard, and our community. And this is an awesome opportunity for you all to build relationships with the community even greater, and for them to hear your heartbeat, that you care about the inmates, you care about the officers, and you care about the community's, uh, security. So thank you for your leadership in this, and, um, thank you for your service.
Hi, my name's Jeannie Brown, and I am in Summit Township. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, tell you about, uh, 75% of the UK are vaccinated. Um, in week 42 COVID-19 vaccine surveillance report, page 23, UK now finds the vaccine interferes with the body's ability to make antibodies, and the long-term vaccinated people are far more susceptible to any mutations of the virus, and the unvaccinated will gain lasting, if not permanent immunity to all strains of the alleged virus after being naturally infected with it once. Anthony Fauci confirms that the PTR, PCR tests cannot detect live viruses. Anthony Fauci confirms that neither the antigen test nor the PCR test can tell us whether someone is contagious or not. This invalidates all the foundations of the so-called pandemic. The C, PCR test was the only indication of a pandemic. Without the PCR test, no pandemic. June 16th, Anthony Fauci testified in Senate hearings that you can watch on YouTube, and seven, and 42,000 people have, um, they asked Fauci, why are we still in a state of emergency months after vaccines, among other things? These vaccines are for emergency use only, not for everybody to take if they have a cough. I can, um, I just wanted to say, after World War II and the Holocaust, they wrote the Nuremberg Code. Number one in the Nuremberg Code is the voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential. That means you shall not be able to make your, shall be able to make your choice without the intervention of force, fraud, deceit, duress, or overreaching and coercion. An informed consent is a must, but no one tells you what, or in these vaccines.
Your time's up, then.
There's red flags.
I wanted to start by thanking Commissioner Bear for all the work he has done to stand up against governmental corruption. Since I began attending over a year ago, he has been pushing for us to make changes for the better, often standing alone and subject to persecution. He should be overwhelmingly encouraged to continue representing his district and our county. I sure do wish we had more representatives like Commissioner Bear with a fear of the Lord, a heart for freedom, loving people, and a backbone to speak up. In addition, Commissioner Bear was the only commissioner to show up and listen to all the factual data provided by last week's panel of engineers and professionals that have been, uh, that been revealing, um, the problems with our election process. I simply do not understand why, after being personally invited, that the rest of all of you, plus most of the precinct clerks and our county clerk, are turning a blind eye to the information that is so essential to their jobs and responsibilities that they have been elected for, and to the future of our great state and country. Why? Why would anyone not want to expose the anomalies that affect true elections? We need to be assured that we have a safe and secure election, not just told. Uh, the last thing I was gonna point out was to ask you to, uh, review the email sent by Bill Richardson, but you have already reviewed it and presented it and planning on it, so I am greatly thankful for that. And since I have a few more seconds, um, I, we also know that there has already been spent $3.2 billion on a new vaccine that is largely untested.
Ten seconds.
And proven to have even higher rates of causing heart disease than COVID. Please help us stop this madness. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. First of all, I just wanted to thank you, uh, for all of your work, uh, and your, uh, questions, and everything that you've done, uh, to support the idea of exploring whether or not we should have a new jail. Um, I think it's critically important that I address a couple of things for public consumption tonight, um, one of them being the MDOC option, Michigan Department of Corrections, for those that don't understand what I'm talking about. There's been a lot of talk as to whether or not the Michigan Department of Corrections would be able to, uh, absorb the Jackson County Jail, because we obviously have a huge relationship with them in this county. The reality of that is, we can't. We're prohibited by law in doing something like this. Um, so I had the opportunity to have, uh, my jail captain reach out to the Deputy Director of the Michigan Department of Corrections to address this very issue. One of the issues was whether or not the cotton facility here in Jackson was gonna be closing soon. It is not. There may be a situation where one of the wings, or one of the little vestibles inside of the, of the prison is going to close, but that would not be open for, uh, county jail. We cannot mix convicted felons with people who haven't been convicted of a crime yet. That's essential. Um, the other thing is that there's no plans for anything to be closed, so it's simply not an option. Michigan Department of Corrections will not accommodate that, they can't, they're prohibited by law. So I wanted to make that very clear. The other issue that I wanted to make clear was whether or not, uh, there was a different way and a more cost-effective way to build this jail. There is not. I have confirmed with, uh, architects that there's simply no better way at this day and age to build a jail than what the product is before you. Um, so I'm confident in that. Um, there's been some talk about there being fluff. There's no fluff. We went through this thing meticulously, we presented a tremendous amount of evidence, we did a huge study, and all of those gentlemen over there were involved with it. I promise you, there is no fluff. This will pull Jackson County through that jail knot that we have been under for some, for my entire 30-year career as a law enforcement officer. It will pull us through and take us into the next 30 years, which is what we need to do. If we skimp on it now, and you guys already know this, but this is for public consumption, if we skimp on it now, we're gonna pay for it in a couple more years, just like they did with the addition in 78, just like they did with the addition in 2000. That's the kinda stuff we're trying to avoid. That's what this does, and that's the informed person. So I just wanted to make that clear for public consumption, and thank you again for your vote. Appreciate it.
My name is Margaret Stevens. I live in, my husband and I live in Summit Township. We've only been in Jackson not seven years yet. Um, we're here due to relocation, um, from where he works. Um, I don't know if a new jail is needed. I know that we're paying for millages, for schools, and roads, that we're... I know that we're paying for millages, for schools, and roads that we'll never benefit from. We take a lot of pride in our property. Our home is very well-kept, and our land is very well-kept. So for us, sorry, I'm a little nervous with public speaking. So for me, and I know quite a few of my neighbors, while this may seem like a juvenile issue, the deer are demolishing our property. It would be very hard for me and several of my neighbors to vote for millages when we call every year about the pounds, the piles and piles of deer feces. I spend hundreds of dollars in landscaping as well as time on my yard. We go on vacation last week, we come back, everything is eaten. It's ridiculous. So I don't know if this county is the place. I see you laughing, but I'm serious. Everywhere I call, I call the Southern County Secretary, they tell me nothing can be done, but I know in places like Ann Arbor, East Lansing, Southfield, Michigan, they are doing something. This is a problem, and maybe juvenile compared to people worrying about vaccines and other things. Sorry. I would like something done about the deer, the wild turkey, and all the other animals who enjoy my property more than I do. That's all I have to say. Have a good night. I'm sorry. I know my time is probably up, but we'll also both be retiring in less than six years, so adding this significant money is for us to think about all of that. That's a lot, again, for property that these deers enjoy more than we do. Sorry.
Ma'am, I would ask that, please don't leave. Let me talk to you about what we're doing.
Okay.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Seeing or hearing none, we've moved on to commissioner comments. Any commissioner comments? Commissioner Baer.
Before people leave and before I make my comment, I would request that the administrator, July, all of our meetings have been off the normal schedule. For August, all of our meetings will be off the normal schedule and off the normal locations. So could, I think you're better skilled at explaining this if you would, please.
That is correct. We moved the July meetings back one week due to the July 4th holiday falling. The August meetings, the primary is the second, and that's also our first meeting. So the board asked that we move it back a week. So everything's just back one week. So instead of the first Tuesday, go to the second Tuesday, then the, you know, third Monday and the fourth Tuesday.
Locations?
Locations, there's another catch there too, actually. The technology that we're always struggling with in this room is, gosh, 12, 13-years-old, mics are failing, things like that. We are having a whole new system put in, so we'll have different, larger TVs, hopefully for all of you to be able to see more clearly, and the mics should work better. So we're going to have the first meeting, actually, the first two meetings, so our study session, which is at 7:00 AM, and then our committees, 8, 10, and 12, will be on the 17th floor. And then our Tuesday night meeting, this meeting in August, will be on the second floor. That's our plan. We call that a treat.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Duckham.
Comment on my own.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Voter integrity and the legitimacy of the election in 2020. There's only one statistic you really need to know, that in Michigan, there are 7,500 citizens over the eligible age for voting. So you could only have 7,500, no, I'm sorry, 7,500,000 voters of voting age, but yet, we had 8 million votes cast.
If I could correct that a little bit, there were 8 million-plus registered voters, only 5.5 million people voted. I know because I reported it out to another couple groups talking about this. But you're right about the eight being registered. We had more registered voters than we had eligible voters. And the reason for that was Secretary of State refused to clean up the voter rolls. When people say, "I see dead people," yeah, there are, there were some 112-year-old people on the voting list.
Commissioner Duckham.
Yeah, I'd like to take this opportunity. I appreciated working as a commissioner with Commissioner Baer for the last few years, and I'd like to publicly endorse Tony and his run for reelection. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. These were pretty big issues affecting the community, and it really is great to see people caring about it and taking notice. Beyond that, I too have worked with Commissioner Baer now going on four years almost, and we don't always agree. However, he's been a very, very strong conservative voice, which I consider myself to be as well. He stood shoulder-to-shoulder with me, whether it was freedom of medical choice, when we passed a resolution opposing vaccine passports and vaccine mandates in this county. He stood up against unconstitutional government mandates. We forget about that. It takes sand to stand up to people when it's going on. It's easy to look at it after the fact, and it's easy for an outside person to say, "Yeah, I could do that too, but this man here has done it." So I too endorse him. I wish you the best in your race, and I appreciate your input even when we do disagree.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Snell, then Pulaski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I've known Tony 20 years, probably 20-plus. And yeah, we butt-heads sometimes, but Tony's definitely a solid conservative, and I hope to continue to work with him on this board. Yeah, he points out things that makes us think, and we appreciate that. We should appreciate that. So thank you, Tony, and I wish you well in your election.
Commissioner Pulaski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank the sheriff and his staff for the hard work in recognizing the weaknesses of our existing jail and for their energy in informing us and the rest of the community of the weaknesses that we need to remedy. So appreciate that very much. Also, the work that's been done by the fire chiefs and by our 911 staff in trying to improve our emergency medical dispatch. I think we've, we've done some good public safety work tonight and put, we're going to put some things in front of the voters that I hope they will pass. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other? Commissioner Baer.
Well, I too have enjoyed working with Commissioner Kennedy for two terms, enjoyed working with Commissioner Alexander for this year. I think they're both great commissioners, and I would like to endorse both of them in their primaries.
Thank you, Chairman. Remember that, Mike? This is Tuesday the 26th, so of course I want to remind everyone, next Tuesday is Election Day. Everyone's been talking about various endorsements, and I've been pleased to accept several myself. But I really always feel the most important thing, and one of the most amazing things about our country is we get to go and vote, and that's just something that, you know, the world over, it's not common. And so I just, you know, we talked about millages tonight and ballot ideas, but the actual ability for our citizens to walk in and vote. Make sure you do it, and make sure you encourage somebody else to do it. You know, I'd love to see us get to the point where we're at 50, 60, 70, 80% turnout for even these primaries and stuff. It's really important, go out and vote. Not everyone gets to do it. Whether you vote for me or vote against me, I really don't care. Go and vote. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? In accordance with MCL 15.268C, collective bargaining agreement negotiations will be discussed. I entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Do I, we have support? Madam Clerk, could you call the chair, call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Walz.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham.
Yes.
Commissioner Pulaski.
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Snell.
Yes.
Commissioner Baer.
Yes.
Chairman Shotwell.
Yes.
The motion passes.